Stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
Pledge of the flag to the United States of America. It is the republic for which we stand, our nation, under God, indivisible, and with the deep justice of our own.
Okay, we'll call the meeting order at six o'clock. I think our agenda is set, so we'll move into presentations. We've got Coach Winter here to present to us today.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. You guys want to just help me out where I should stand?
Kind of right where that chair is. Back up if you want to back up, right there. Perfect.
Okay. Well, first and foremost, thank you guys for allowing me to squeeze into a spot on your agenda. I was told I had two minutes. I'll do my best to be brief, but as always, I just want to do my best to keep each of you as informed as I possibly can with things going on in the football program. So I know that Mr. Fiskus did update you a little bit on why we're here or why I'm here. I know why you guys are here for plenty of reasons. After multiple discussions with, number one, the coaching staff, the athletic directors from both Oakfield, Alabama and Elba, and the superintendents from both Oakfield, Alabama and Elba, we are all of the same understanding that where we are at right now with our program, we feel both comfortable and ready to say that we should look to transition our eight-man football team back to eleven. So to figure out where we were as far as good standing, a couple of different ways. Number one, back in the spring, we sent out a recruitment slash interest letter to a bunch of different, both current and prospective players from both the districts. And when we received the letters back that the kids needed to sign, date for us, and include a bunch of different pieces of information, we actually were met with very overwhelmingly positive interest. So that's when the conversations loosely started to happen. Now, obviously, we were in the middle of a closure in both of the districts across the state, so it was something that, there were bigger fish to fry at the time. We were encouraged by the interest, but it was something that we very loosely pursued because we weren't sure where the next direction was going to take us. When we talked and reached out to the Section Five football coordinator, Scott Barker, at the time, because they were still planning for a fall season and, again, all the uncertainty that existed there, he just said that it may be in the best interest at the time to not dismantle a schedule for Class D, dismantle a schedule for eight-man, and maybe with all that uncertainty, we just stay put for a year regardless of what our numbers looked like. So we didn't pursue it any further. Fast forward to right now. That interest level from those letters is now met with the interest levels that continue to increase through the opportunities that we've been presenting kids through the weight rooms, both here, both at Elba, and that level is continuing to grow. And so when we crunched those numbers now, we felt that within the past couple of weeks, it was a conversation that we needed to revisit. So we did. We were all on the same page again, so we once again pursued it to Section Five, to Scott Barker, and he said, because there is nothing set in stone right now for our new start date of March 1st, now would be a good time to pursue this. It's something that the schedule is going to be a little bit more flexible because they're still making it, so that reopened the window to have these conversations. So just so we're all on the same page of the motive behind this, obviously, from a school standpoint, from an administrative standpoint, and even from a teacher and coach standpoint, number one, first and foremost, it's going to get more of our players on the field at any given moment. It's going to give them an opportunity to play the game and get engaged in that learning experience. Quick math for you. Between offense, defense, and special teams in eleven-man, that's going to give us eighteen more positions to be able to place our student athletes at Oakfield and Elba in spots that they're engaged, they're learning, and they're having a positive experience. The proposed structure right now heading into the March 1st season, obviously, our varsity would return to eleven-man. We felt that our junior varsity, which is very important that we keep, we felt like this decision, if it was going to happen, we needed to preserve the JV level that we brought back last year. We can keep that eight-man. That's going to serve its purpose, which at the JV level in any sport, first and foremost, the purpose of it is just the development of the student athlete. So it's getting them the reps they need to develop, improve, play the game, have a positive experience, and we can continue to do that in the eight-man structure, which is going to allow us for right now a little bit more flexibility in our high school grades nine through twelve, while also that's something that we can revisit if the interest continues to grow. Those younger underclassmen grades, they're a little bit more difficult to predict as far as getting commitment, engaging the interest this far into the preseason. As we get closer to March, if that's a number that continues to grow, that's something that we can always visit as returning to eleven as well. Then our modified B will remain eleven. Our modified's been eleven the past couple of years, even when varsity's been eight. So we're going to be good to go there. The numbers that we have gathered at this moment, based on the letters and based on a roster captive kids that have expressed their interest to coaches for football, we're at about twenty-seven at the varsity, twenty at the JV level. Both numbers that, again, we felt that when we got to the low twenties, mid twenties, that's when the conversation could start to take form. When we were met with the more overwhelming number of mid to high twenties, that was something that we said, let's make a move on this. The tipping point that I would say, the moment that we said, now this is really something we need to look at, was the addition of something called the JV flex rule. A rule was passed this summer at both the Section Five and the state level that's going to allow junior varsity football players to dress not only for their junior varsity games, but also for varsity games as well, as long as they do not exceed a maximum that's set for those kids of ten plays. So as a coach, you hear this and you think, this is fantastic news, because not only is that going to increase the number of players that are on the field for a varsity football game, that's going to allow JV football players to continue their development in a whole nother way. So now when you get to that sophomore grade and you get a kid who's developed up through your program, and they may be teetering on whether they're ready to go to varsity, or maybe they're ready to stay down on JV and get the full game reps, they're going to be able to do both. And now they'll get their full JV season while you also can, as coaches, in a more controlled environment, give them a specified role at the varsity level in games and say, hey, go get a taste of this speed and this action and continue your development and get them ready for their junior year and then eventually their senior year. With negative perception, I do want to come out and say, right out of the gate, I don't want the presentation to come off as a negative notion towards eight-man. That's not why I'm here. I just know when talking to Scott Barker of Section Five Football, when asking him two years ago, why did you bring eight-man football? The definition of why we have eight-man football is, we are trying to give teams that could not, by any means, have an eleven-man football season based on their numbers, a chance to survive and play the game. A lot of opponents that we faced in the past couple of years, the typical roster size for them is fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, maybe seventeen kids. Those are not numbers that reflect a team that could survive in the eleven-man division. So it kind of comes with a perception of, should those numbers be true, which I believe they're going to be relatively accurate, we have more than enough freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors in our football program to be able to make this change. So we don't want the perception of, between the flex rule and our current varsity roster, taking the field and hitting the sideline with close to thirty bodies when our opponent, who's fielding almost all their sophomores and maybe some freshmen, is struggling to get to seventeen and eighteen because they're playing this level for why it was intended to be played. They're playing because their football program is on life alert. And maybe we were at a point where we needed to look at that two years ago, but it helped us. We've been able to grow. We've been able to provide kids with a positive experience, and now that our numbers are back to where they need to be, we're ready to make that change because not only would we survive in eleven-man, we'd thrive as well. This is kind of just an extra piece. I think this is a decision solely based on numbers, but also more so the challenge of sport. The transition will hopefully eliminate the number of contests that were decided either early or by a very excessively large margin in our games. We've had a lot of games the past couple of years. Our kids have gone out. They've done what they've been coached to do. By a scoreboard standpoint, they've been successful, and we've been up fifty-two to nothing halfway through the second quarter, which is great. Don't get me wrong, we want to win games, but there's something to be said for the challenge of sport that comes with a closer contest, and those have been far and few between for our kids the past couple of years. So hopefully, with a larger degree of difficulty with the game that's set in front of them, it could be met with many more positives in the learning experience than met with a guaranteed win or a win that was by a very excessively large margin. I rattled off a couple of them in the last bullet. The ability to persevere, overcome adversity, having to make sacrifices, working with a group to accomplish a common goal, they're all there. And it's not that those weren't addressed in eight-man. They were. But if we can continue to provide them with other experiences Monday through Sunday that'll give them those to a larger degree, I mean, as educators, that's something that we obviously want to look to do. The next couple of slides. Get fast breath real quick. Next couple of slides. When we got together with the staff, we thought, if we were going to present this information, which this is why we created the PowerPoint, this is going to be presented to a parent meeting that we're going to have after the two board meetings, what were some questions that we could head off immediately and say, yeah, absolutely, that's a good question, and here's the answer? Number one, people want to know, if we make this transition now, do we want to get caught into a situation where we're jumping from eight to eleven and then maybe in a year or two, we're going back to eight? Do we want to get in the habit of doing that? My answer is, sure. Why not? Because that's a numbers decision. I mean, we're going to address each team differently year to year. We're going to address that group when we get them. Right now, our group suggests from a numeric standpoint, we can go eleven. If in two years, the numbers are not what we want them to be, and we have a team that's maybe in the high teens and we need to explore returning to eight, that's fine too, because that's why that level was created. If we don't feel like we have the numbers, we will make that jump. And just to prove that consistency in one of those two divisions isn't necessarily an indicator of how the scoreboard may look, in 2018, we were a part of a league with three other teams, Marcus Whitman, Holly, and CG Finney. Of the four teams, by a mile, we were the last to make the transition. The other three made it early, February, March, gave them a chance to, the coaching staff to dive into information, the players to prep for them to do install. We ended up starting practice with eleven-man in August before we needed to make the decision late to jump. That put a lot of stress on the kids and the coaching staff to learn the changes between eight and eleven at a very quick rate before practice was literally starting days later. Well, we didn't lose a game. We won a lot of games by a pretty large margin and eventually made our way to a championship. So I don't think that that time to learn the game for the other three teams really indicated anything. And then fast forward to last year, here we are, us as well as some other teams returning to their second year of eight-man. Our finalist opponent was Maple Grove. Maple Grove was in the same boat. They made the transition late, and they had to play teams like CG Finney, like Holly, who not only have been doing this for the offseason, but had a year of experience, and they were able to defeat those teams and make it to the championship game against us. So the transition proved to not be a huge ordeal for them either. The skills needed to be good in this game, blocking, tackling, passing, catching, running, your strength and your agility, they're there for both. If you have them, you have them. If you do not, you do not. Are we going to be successful in eleven-man football? Because we've had such success the past two years, I'm sure people want to know, are we going to be able to win games in eleven-man? The group of kids we have right now and for the foreseeable future, what they've been able to do physically for us in these offseason activities would suggest, as the person that was hired to be the successor of ability for our student athletes, I'd be willing to put money on, they're going to win some football games. They're going to be A-OK. Stated in the last slide, they have the skills. We have plenty of players that are proficient in those skills that you need to be successful in the game. You guys know, you hired my brother, Corey. Coach Winter's going to be helping us at the varsity level. He's come from York the past couple of years, an eleven-man program where after just getting to know these kids and seeing what they're capable of physically, mentally, after the past couple of weeks, he's like, boy, we didn't have that at York. And York was a team that they were, they were able to win a couple of games, and they had pretty fair seasons, and they were a successful eleven-man football team. And he believes that we have that type of success sitting in our program right now. And then I would also argue that success is a relative term. Yeah, we're talking about the scoreboard, sure, but we're talking also as teachers and educators about providing the best learning experience we can possibly provide. The values derived from challenge and trying our best to give those kids those values and have them practice them as much as we possibly can. If they are able to use the things they learned through those challenges after high school, to me, as a coach, that's successful. And I'm sure that that's a cliche statement from a coach, but in all seriousness, that's why we are an extracurricular or a part of the education system. That's got to be our first and foremost priority. And then number three, in 2018, people are going to say, well, where are you getting your numbers from? You know, in 2018, our signups suggested that we were going to be good for an eleven-man roster as well. We get to practice in August, we don't have the number that reflects an eleven-man team, we got to make a late change to eight-man. What if this happens again? Well, I was hired, I want to say May of 2018 over at Elba to teach. When Coach Cinerino was the coach, I immediately got involved with him, got involved in all his offseason activities, late May, in the mini camps in June, and weight room, June, July, August. He immediately allowed me the responsibility of working with the kids in the weight room, primarily, strength and conditioning. I think I typically was only seeing four to five kids. We got to that start date in August, and I felt like, as I looked up and down this roster of kids, I still had not met the majority of the team that he was speaking about. I mean, this PowerPoint was made a couple of weeks ago, so I put in the past month, we've had twenty different kids come to at least two weight room sessions and demonstrate their interest and talk about the sport. That number's just, that's gone up from here, because now we've gone to Oakfield in the afternoons, we're going to Elba in the mornings, and that number is actually sitting more at like twenty-four. So the number's continuing to grow. I anticipate that if we continue to do the right thing as leaders in the program, it's only going to grow from now to March 1st as well. What makes the most sense? I do want to just say, eight-man served its purpose for OAE football. In 2018, it gave us a chance to catch our breath in a very young merge program. It gave us a chance to give the kids a great experience. They went out, they played games, had a good time, they won, which eventually allowed us to bring back the JV level, which still a lot of programs at our size are struggling to do. Again, we go out in 2019, we get to give developmentally appropriate football as our freshmen and sophomores play JV, most of our juniors and seniors play varsity, and the positive experience continued. But just because it was good to us, and just because that we had a positive experience, doesn't mean we stay there. This is a decision that I feel is very reflective of growth. This is a positive thing that we're talking about right now. It is not the fact that numbers are continuing to decrease. Kids want to play in our program now. They want to play. They're building relationships with our other players. We have a great group of kids right now. I can't say enough good things about the kids that we're working with from Oakfield, Alabama, and Elba in the upperclassmen grades. It does not mean we stay there. I guess that's the bottom line. We're in very good standing right now. We, a lot of people from the coaching staff to admin feel very good about our program. So that's where we feel that it's time to look at this as a necessary transition and continue to grow and continue to make those steps to give those kids a great experience. That's all I got. So I will open it up to any questions at all.
The kids that you've reached out to in the letters, what grades?
That's grades nine through twelve. Combination of, not really sure at the time what our modified staff was going to look like, as well as hoping that we were still going to play a fall season, and that was something that we were going to tackle August, September. We didn't get to modified yet, and again, that's a tough grade to be able to gauge interest in, but modified would be the next step of sending out letters and talking to kids and getting a true accurate sign-up of what we're going to have in the seventh and eighth grade at the next, in the two schools.
So my concern is, is the jumping back and forth. I understand what you're saying about that, but I don't know that the community wants to jump back and forth. Like, I think everybody finally got comfortable with eight-man, and we jump back to eleven-man, then we have to go back to eight-man, there's going to be rumblings. And I can tell you right now, that seventh and eighth grade, you're going to have a hard time with enough kids for an eleven-man team in the seventh and eighth grade. This year, those kids have, I don't want to say left out, obviously, we're all handling situations, you know, that was given to us, but, you know, we've now lost some of those kids that have gone to play to other sports because there hasn't been any really football involvement for them. So I think it might be even harder for that grade, but I think, I guess my suggestion was, would be, is let's see where we're at with those seventh and eighth graders before you really try to make that jump, because, you know, you're basically, like I said, three years away from those kids possibly being in a varsity team and having to go back. I know everybody wants to get back to eleven-man football, but I don't know if people want to have to then, three years from now, jump back down.
Sure.
But I think it's, you know, our, and he says, though, two of those kids that are up there, they deserve, you've got twenty-seven kids on a team, they deserve to play eleven-man football.
Absolutely. So, no, I hear what you're saying. Absolutely. And that's the next step. I guess I should say that while the jumping from back and forth should be looked at as just a pure numbers game, to address each team as we get each team, the goal is going to be to stay, obviously. The goal's stay, because participation in your program is indicative of growth and being able to continue to stabilize that growth. We're going to go out now, and we, you're right, we need to address those two grades, and we're going to do so relentlessly.
That age group has always been tough to get, well, in football. If you can pull more kids into it, that'd be great.
I know the part that's going to help a ton is at that school. I'm responsible for teaching grades seven through eight in FSET, and our modified head coach for this year and the foreseeable future is Mike Anderson, teaches over here and teaches those same grades as well. I mean, I don't want to speak for myself, but I know with Coach Anderson, very positive relationships with the kids, seems to be a good role model for the district, and he's ready to, he's ready to go full till on the recruiting process, and I think that's going to help a ton, is that he's up in this building.
Hopefully, you get to play.
And, yeah. True disclaimer there. We say March 1st, but fingers crossed, right?
Any other questions? Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Good luck with everything.
Thanks, Tyler. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Presentations, due approval of minutes. Do you resolve that the minutes of the October 20th, 2020 meeting be approved? Do we get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes. Do you have any visitor's requests? Okay. Warrants and internal claims be resolved after an audit of the bills payment of the October 16 warrants. Internal claims auditor reports be approved. Do we get a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes. Second reading of four policies.
Again, this is the second reading of the four policies that I presented to the board last board meeting. All four of them are new, except for really the last one is just updating the student use of personal technology. We upgrade our AUP and code of conduct each and every year. Rob's got a very succinct but lengthy AUP that, you know, the students and families sign off, and the other first three are just in reaction to the educational environment we're all facing right now, so nothing earth-shattering. Certainly, if you want to wait another month and approve them, next meeting you can, or if you have any questions, otherwise, they can be approved as written tonight.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the remote learning one, the first paragraph says, "The district may offer remote or distant learning to students at certain times, including but not limited to independent study enrichment courses and in the event of an extraordinary circumstance such as widespread illness, natural disaster, or other emergency situation." I was actually confused by the addition of independent study and enrichment courses. So this seems to promote it beyond just this pandemic.
Correct. There are actually times where students, based on scheduling, cannot get into certain classes, or they need credits above and beyond what we can offer them. So there are a few instances where we do offer some independent studies. I don't know, recently, Matt, if you want to speak to that? Do we have any kids this year doing any sort of independent studies?
I do not believe we have any this year.
Okay.
Last year, we did have a couple, like, if you want to go back and dig up the details, but this year, I don't believe we have any.
Okay. But it affords the district the opportunity that if a child's interested in some sort of course, even a course that we don't offer, that we can somehow provide remote learning or content in a different way, that they can do an independent study, and really, it's studying at home and completing the coursework on their own.
So how would that work? Would, if our school district was going to give them credit for such a course, they would have to be officially enrolled in it? Who would pay for that enrollment? Who would grant the credit?
Yeah.
What would be the...
Can you give a specific example? Last year, Matt?
I have a scenario, and I'll use a hypothetical for this year. So let's say that it was a kid who couldn't get AP Biology. I'm making this up. And his schedule just wouldn't align, because AP courses are very tough to fit in. A scenario that we could work out this year, well, he's got to study all third period. We could put him in our library, learning lab, works on the content, works with the teachers during office hours, or whichever teacher pushes him to the library that period to provide the instruction, get in that independent study, because he can't fit it into this period, separate schedule, so it's one AP Biology is off. That's a hypothetical, but I know there was a similar situation last year with physics, and it didn't involve the library, but she couldn't fit it in her schedule, and she desperately wanted one.
So how did she handle it last year?
So she worked with the teacher during office hours, after school, met with the teacher when she could, on her turn, couldn't push him to the class.
So I guess my, my question is, for your hypothetical this year, if the teacher who normally teaches AP Biology has to reteach or everything to that independent study student, that's like an extra and separate class, if the student isn't getting taught by the teacher who normally teaches AP Biology, that would actually be a legitimate independent study, but I wonder how many actual independent studies that our high school students do independently?
It's very, it's very few and far between, but at the same time, now more so with this remote learning, a lot of teachers are taping their lessons and uploading them. You know, I mean, obviously, we have the synchronous learning, but there are a lot of remote learners that are actually learning from home that can view that. So we're offering it up to our students, like he had said. If we can't schedule a student, or the student says, no, I don't want a lunch, or I want an extra class or two to do this, it just provides them the avenue that they can not actually be enrolled in the class, per se, and be there face-to-face with the teacher, but, okay, I'm going to look at the videos and do the content kind of on my own. You know, we need to be cautious with that, like Matt said. You know, we do have office hours to follow up with the students, and, but, you know, the teacher isn't sitting down for another forty minutes after school and reteaching everything that they've done. The student, you know, there is a little bit of collaboration where we say to the student, you know, there's a lot of work on your end because you aren't going to have that teacher live teaching this, you know, they'll be there as a resource, but it isn't per se an extra instructional assignment for the teacher.
Do you think it would be possible to tighten up that language a little bit before we approve that? I guess I just think, could this be, well, any kid who says, no, I really don't, AP Physics is only offered first period, I can't fit that in, or, so I want to take an independent study, or I want to be enriched by it? It just seems, I just wonder if we could tighten up the language on independent study and enrichment courses, so it didn't open that door quite so widely to OA giving credit for courses.
I will tell you that if any student wanted an independent study, something like that, there's collaboration with the counselors, the teacher, high school administration. It's not all of a sudden where a kid's just going to say, hey, I want to do this, and we say, okay.
I'll give you this real life example for that right now. We did get a request for AP studio arts this year, and in collaboration with the teacher, we just even, we couldn't provide that kind of instruction.
AP what?
AP art.
Okay.
And we couldn't, with the teacher, we collaborated and decided we couldn't provide that kind of instruction, meet the expectations of the AP course, through an independent study, we just couldn't, the decision was, we couldn't, despite getting several requests.
Well, that's what I wondered, because I know in the past, if you say, okay, a student in art is taking an independent study, but really, they go sit in on the seventh or eighth grade class so they can work on their artwork, and then the... and then the teacher's in the quandary of, do I teach my seventh and eighth graders, or do I help this independent study person? I guess I just, if I was the student and this was the policy, and there had, there was no other cautionary limits listed, I guess maybe the word may offer is the caution. I, I just wonder if there's a way to tighten that up so we don't open a Pandora's box where we're giving, maybe we could just think about it before we approve that?
Yep. I can provide you a revision, not a problem.
Just somehow to make it so that we're not in the business of giving people credit for courses they're not enrolled in, or adding on the burden of multiple independent studies which turn into additional preps on top of everything for the teachers. I don't, I just don't know if it would be possible.
True.
Do I need to make a motion to that, or can he play around with it?
So, we, we don't, I, I think we're okay. We don't have to approve these.
No, it's just, it's just a second reading. We can revise it and get it back to you.
I would just be interested in what we could come up with.
True.
If there aren't any questions on those other three, and we can see if there's questions in the other three, but there's not, we could probably go ahead and approve on those, right?
Yes.
Are there any other questions on the other three? Justin, Pete, Laura, Jackie, Dan. Any questions on those policies?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
You comfortable with?
I, I'm comfortable.
Okay, so, do you resolve that policies 6570, 3520, and 7316 be adopted as written? Do we have a motion for that? Pete, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. I'll just push that along for the next.
Thank you.
Uh, on to reports. Christine?
Not a whole lot has really changed as far as state aid. It's still pretty, any of the cuts, it's still pretty unknown. Um, there's really been no guidance on it. Um, you know, some people are feeling a little more confident that it's not going to happen, but if it's, it's still being called a withholding, not a cut, and, um, it's kind of looking more like we won't have many answers until the spring. So, uh, there's that, and I know that the transportation aid is a, is a topic, and, um, it's a percentage of that. I, I think the calculation is going to be, um, not as large as we might anticipate. We could be a little more.
Could you, um, speak up through the mask a little bit?
I'm sorry. I can take the mask off.
Okay.
Um, so the, the transportation aid, um, that they're talking about not aiding those expenses that were incurred after March 18th of last year, uh, because we weren't transporting students. Um, I don't believe that that's going to be, um, as large as we thought it is.
The, it, the cut or the payment?
That's a cut. That would be a cut.
Okay.
Um, but, um, you know, there's still, it's still, um, hopefully, um, school board associations will be reaching out to the legislators to try and get the language changed in that law that says that they can't aid if we weren't transporting students.
That's what it boils down to right now, is the language of the law.
It's the language of the law.
And they have to legally follow that language of the law.
Correct.
And then, once that's changed, if it, if it's, if it's changed, then we would get that cut back, hopefully, or at least a percentage of that cut back.
There seemed to be a little optimism. I don't know if you guys read your onboard editor.
Yeah.
I apparently got time this month, and I read mine, and there seemed to be optimism in that, that, uh, there, there's, there's people that are fighting for the schools, uh, to see that we get that transportation aid.
Absolutely.
So, hopefully.
Absolutely. Yeah, it doesn't sound all doom and gloom.
No, but initially your gut, your response is like, are you kidding me? How can they do this? But then when you, when you think, there, there's laws for a reason, and, and we have to follow them, but there, what we just experienced, I think there's going to have to be a change in that law, otherwise I think we're, we would, very, not only us, but everybody would be a huge just imagine.
So, just a matter of curiosity, because I don't know how it works. Who, who has a strong enough lobby to convince them to change that law retroactively and be responsible for paying for what they mandated us to do versus the size of the state budget deficit, which would, I mean, this would be a way he could, our governor could say, yay, we got some cash to play with. So, just who lobbies that strongly to push back against that?
I think the school board associations will do that, um, and they'll provide, and, and we can, anyone can, can write letters to your, um, legislators, and the ASBO, the school business associations, um, they're doing that at the, the state level.
Our attorneys for NISCUS, the superintendent of association in New York, is writing letters daily.
And they're feeling optimistic about this?
Um, yes, in a long time.
Is it going to be the governor, or is it going to be the school board association?
Oh, wow.
Yes.
As serious. Shall we bet? I don't know.
We're all being recorded too.
Yeah, so I guess I won't bet.
There's plenty of advocates out there for, for schools, especially during this time.
Okay, absolutely.
Hopefully they won't hide behind a law, right, and say, oh, sorry.
I, I just couldn't even believe that when it came through that.
Sure, sure. They, I mean, they mandated, right? The governor mandated that we had to continue to pay all these employees and pay these expenses, and then after the fact said, you won't get paid for that, you won't get paid for that. So, the law is the law. Any other questions? Christine, Dan, you good?
No, I'm set.
Okay. Okay, thanks Christine. John?
Um, I'll start off with the good news first, um, before I get into my COVID update and presentation for the board. This Saturday, we're going to be hosting the cross-country championships for Class C and D. I want to thank Pete Bueller and Jeff Schlegenhoff for organizing this and advocating for our campus to, to do that. Obviously, um, with the yellow and orange and red indicators in Monroe County and, and some of the school districts, um, some of the venues had to change, and, um, Section Five reached out to us, and we were more than happy to say sure. So, we had Section Five representatives here this past Sunday, um, taking a look at our course, making sure that our campus is set to go. I will tell you that they were so impressed that they think that this is going to be a annual thing here, which is just some great PR for our district. Um, I also want to thank Jordan and his buildings and grounds staff for their efforts in, in, um, you know, tracking out the course and getting flags and, and making things, um, um, ready to go. I'm proud of our cross-country teams. Um, they're Class D two champs. Uh, the boys finished 16-0, the girls are 15-1. So, I'm excited to see them race on Saturday. Uh, we are scheduling two different, um, flights, I guess. Class C will run and then Class D, because we're expecting over 40 schools here this Saturday, and obviously we need to stagger them. There's no spectators allowed. Um, the buses are going to come, the kids are going to run, and they're getting out of here. Um, there's no award ceremonies, and schools are only bringing, you know, their top seven or eight runners. So, it's very, very much following the guidelines, but it's going to be some great PR. We are going to livestream it, um, and actually Section Five, uh, you know, picks up the, the tab for, you know, the officials and our chaperones, and we'll be, we'll be ready to go. The weather looks nice, a lot better than what it was today. So, um, congratulations to our cross-country team and, and, you know, Jordan and his crew and Pete and Jeff for their organization of all this.
Could you, um, maybe record some cheering to play?
Shouts on, yeah, right.
Like they do on the voice and.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's so sad if there's nobody to shout encouragement when they come across the line.
Exactly, but, um, it'll, it'll, it'll be great. Um, and I'll be here for the, for the event, just to make sure everything runs smoothly. I just want to continue to thank our OA staff, teachers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, buildings and grounds guy, you, you name it. Um, we're still here, we're still open. Um, we're still making things work, and everybody is cleaning and disinfecting and following the protocols and the guidance. The kids have been unbelievable, and, um, you know, uh, just, you know, to say that we're, that we're the last district standing, hey, we're the last district standing. So, I just want to thank everybody for their efforts and continued efforts. Um, I will be honest with you, I'm, I'm surprised that we've made it this long, and, uh, we certainly, uh, beat the over-under, and, uh, we just continue to move forward each and every day. So, um, you know, the, the administrators have been phenomenal too, just, you know, every day we come here and keep our fingers crossed. The nurses, um, man, oh, man. Uh, you couldn't ask for a better group of, of staff, and I'm just so proud of this district. Um, everybody stepped up, and, uh, it's been, it's been great, and, um, we just continue to push on, and I just want to go on record and thank everybody in this district for, for what they're doing. It's, it's fantastic. Um, it's, it's mind blowing. And then, uh, we do have an early dismissal drill set for next Tuesday. Um, it is on our website. It's, this is a mandated drill that we need to have annually, and we figured it would be helpful and somewhat rewarding if we did it right before the Thanksgiving break. So, the middle high school building and the elementary buildings next Tuesday will be released about 50 minutes early. Um, and I know the building principals have put out alerts on that. Um, so, you know, we're planning on that for next Tuesday. And I do have a COVID-19 update on guidance. Um, I've been fielding a lot of, um, phone calls and messages, and I want to, um, present to the board something that, um, the administrative team and I have been working on. We've been trying to get our ducks in a row, because obviously, everybody's paying attention to the statistics and the spiking that's occurring and what the governor is saying. So, um, I put together a slide just to try to clarify some information, not only for the community, for the board, to know where the district stands at this point in time. It could be different tomorrow morning. Um, but I just wanted to give you some information, and we'll certainly, um, take your questions, you know, at the end of this. I don't know if, if you guys can see, if you wanted to come over here, um, but I don't know if the board can see this. But, obviously, within the last few weeks, Governor Cuomo has come up with, um, a micro cluster strategy to deal with, um, this COVID-19 illness. And I wanted to update you because there's some language and there's some guidance that, that's changed over the last week or so. And I want to also, um, be able to have the community see, um, what OA is doing about this, what our plan is, and, and hopefully this will clarify some things. So, first of all, part of this micro cluster strategy is that the governor has three different colored zones. He has a yellow zone, an orange zone, and a red zone. Those zones have different, uh, um, metrics to it depending on the county and the zip code and where you live and where you're from. So, for us in Genesee County, we're considered Tier Three based upon our zip code, and we're located in the county with 50, um, with more than 50,000 people. The yellow zone is a precautionary zone, and really, school districts and, and our zip code, our 14125 zip code, um, would be identified as a yellow zone if our geographic area has a seven-day rolling average positivity rate above three and a half percent for 10 days. Now, you may say, well, that doesn't make any sense. What is, what is a day, a seven-day rolling average? Basically, it, it tries to eliminate the outliers, so they do take the first seven days, and then they eliminate the first day and take the eighth day, and eliminate the first day and second day, and take the ninth day. It's, it's a statistical way of kind of smoothing out the data. So, we're looking at our average positivity rate above three and a half percent, and also, we have 15 or more newly identified cases per thousand residents on a seven-day, 10, 100,000 residents on a seven-day average. So, those are the metrics that are used to identify a specific area or even a county per se, um, that's in a yellow zone. The orange zone is the same, except the seven-day rolling average has a positivity rate of four and a half percent. And the red has an average positivity rate of over five and a half percent. So, it's three and a half percent, four and a half percent, five and a half percent. So, that's for us here in, in Genesee County and our, our area. So, someone might say, well, we keep hearing that areas are indicated in a certain zone. How do you get out of them? So, after 14 days from being placed in a focus zone, the State Department of Health, in coordination with the local health department, and in consultation with global health experts, will determine whether data sufficiently demonstrates that the area has successfully reduced viral spread to a level able to be contained, given the testing, contact tracing, and other health system metrics. And I'll get into what that means for school districts. Um, based on the above metrics and expert advisement, the State Department of Health will decide whether the focus zone will be extended, modified, um, or ended. And, you know, um, really it talks about, you know, being eligible to qualify for a new zone designation or ending a, a zone designation if appropriate. So, hence why they're now using school districts to test. So, this was the guidance that came out on Saturday in regards to school districts for this week. It says, effective the week of November 16th, 2020, schools in yellow zones must test 20% of in-person students, faculty, and staff over the two-week period immediately following the announcement of a yellow zone designation. If the results of the testing reveal that the positivity rate among the 20% of those tested is lower than the yellow zone's current seven-day positivity rate, testing at that school will no longer be required to continue. A positivity rate in a school that is lower than, than in the yellow zone is sufficient demonstration that in-person instruction is not a significant driver of local viral spread.
So, we could be as high as a 4.4. That's like the cutoff for orange to yellow. We could be as high as 4.4, be yellow. So, as long as we're less than 4.4 on that metric, then we're done.
Correct, and I, and I'll kind of get to all that. However, obviously, if the results of the testing over the first two weeks reveal that the positivity rate among in-person students, staff, and faculty is the same or higher, we will still be required to continue to test 20% of in-person population on a biweekly basis.
Biweekly instead of weekly?
Well, it's every two weeks. We still need to do it every two weeks. So, it's at the end of every two weeks, we get to say, are we, you know, lower than what, what it is outside the doors here? So, what does that mean if we kind of review this? So, if we get designated as a yellow zone, and I'd like to, um, reiterate, and I have another slide here. Currently, right now, we are not identified as any sort of zone. Nobody in Genesee County is at this point. Um, the numbers aren't good. And so, I want the community and the board to know that we are getting our ducks in a row, because there's certain things that, um, need to happen in order for us to stay fully open. So, again, if we get designated, um, a yellow zone, we're going to be required to test 20% of our student and employee population each week for two weeks to remain 100% open. If we do have fully remote learners that are never on this campus, that are never in any extracurricular activities, and don't step foot on our campus, we do not need to test them. You need to test the people that physically are here. If numbers again are below the seven-day rolling average, we may stop testing after those two weeks. We absolutely need consent from parents to test anyone under 18 years of age. I had sent out a consent form last week with some information to our community regarding that. That was just for information only. Again, we are trying to be very proactive here, and I want to thank the board for being very proactive here, because we certainly don't want to be reactive when we have this information and we know what information and we know what we need to do. The district will not force testing of students or employees who refuse. Those employees, those students may continue to attend school or work for the time being because the district believes that we will have enough who will comply with the testing to remain fully open. And I'll get to the numbers in a second of why we think that. So this COVID-19 testing is a rapid antigen COVID test. It's a lower nasal swab with a Q-tip. It's not one that you shove up your nose and poke your brain. It's about four to five seconds in each nostril where you'll just kind of turn the Q-tip and we get the results in approximately 15 minutes. Test will be administered by school personnel that have been trained to conduct these rapid tests. For example, our nurses, some of our administrators, including myself, and other trained staff. You technically do not need to be a registered nurse or a licensed, you know, practical nurse. You don't need to have a medical degree. You just need to be trained because this test is not very invasive. And there is training that if we do get designated as a zone, that we've identified staff to be trained. So if we take a look at our district numbers, we have close to about 800 students on campus. We have about 200 employees. So I'm using that we have approximately 1,000 students and staff on campus. So if we need to test 20% of those in a week, that's 200 people per week. Divide that by five days in a week, we're averaging about 40 students and staff per day. And if you divide that even more by the two buildings, you're looking at about 20 people within each building.
John, so the two weeks confuses me, the one week versus two weeks. Do we have two weeks to test these students?
Correct. So if we get designated as a yellow zone, the following day is when the testing starts and we have to test for two weeks.
So it was a week. I think when we sat down, it was a week at our meeting. And then it just changed on Saturday to give us more time.
Yes, yes. Correct. As all of this testing is occurring, we can stay fully open. That's the key. I don't want the community or parents or students or the board to think that as soon as we get designated as a yellow zone, we're going remote or we're shutting down. You will hear certain districts in the region doing that. That is because there's money involved and I'll talk about that in a second. They're just much larger and they just don't have the capacity to test. The key here and the game is, is if you don't have the capacity to follow these guidelines, you're out of luck. You must go remote. So what I would like to do is provide the board and provide, you know, the community members and anybody that's watching this with a little idea of what does the testing look like? I've received a lot of phone calls of, yeah, I hear you. Can you demonstrate it for me? And instead of myself putting my picture up on Twitter and showing it, I figured that I would give everybody a quick, a quick video of what it looks like. I don't know if you clicked that. I got a big. You clicked that and then.
That's not a good thing.
Is that frowned upon?
Hi, I'm Dr. Katie Monocle Werns, a pediatrician with New York City Health and Hospitals. The city has started random COVID-19 testing in schools to help keep our students safe and schools open. Today, I'm going to walk you through what both you and your child can expect. One, the test is free, safe, and easy. Two, the test is conducted by a trained health professional. Three, we have two different types of tests. One, that uses a short swab like a Q-tip that's inserted into the front part of the nose for five to 10 seconds. The feeling has been compared to the tickle felt in your nose after eating something spicy. The other one is an option for older children and is a self-administered test. Depending on your school, your child may be able to choose and administer the test themselves under the supervision of a testing provider or school staff member. Both are quick. Each test only takes five to 10 seconds. Four, it's natural for children to feel nervous about getting tested, but the test is not painful and should not be uncomfortable. Its effect is far worse than its bite. Five, now let's get into the mini credit of how this will work. Students will be escorted to the testing area. Social distancing will be maintained at all times and face coverings will be worn at all times except for the very short period when a student must remove it to allow for the test to be administered. The swab will be in the nose for just five to 10 seconds and the entire process of explaining the test to the child and performing the test generally takes 15 minutes. We do not expect any child to be out of class for more than 15 to 30 minutes total, from the time that they are picked up at their classroom until they are escorted back to class. There you have it. Your child will be back in class in a flash. If you have any questions or want to know more about the process, contact your school for details.
I apologize for the skipping of that.
Welcome everyone to our webinar. We're very excited today to be able to share what the University of Michigan has been doing there.
So it's, so it's very quick, very easy to do. And you know, I just wanted again, give, give people the understanding that it is not the, you know, pulp in your brain. It's just a quick swab inside the lower nasal cavity of both, both nostrils. Test takes about 10 to 15 seconds and we get the results in about 15 minutes. So.
Are the test results in 10 to 15 minutes for each individual?
Correct.
Is this where they pool them up?
Nope. It's 10 to 15 minutes for each individual.
So John, I heard from a parent that would be okay with their child being tested, but they would want to be there while the child is being tested.
Correct.
Is that?
I'll get, I'll get to that in a second. Sure. So if I could quickly just talk about the orange and red zone designations and what we're up against if, if things get, get worse. We hope that, you know, unfortunately, if we do get designated, you know, yellow comes first, but there's also a chance and we're waiting on Erie County unfortunately, that there might be some orange and red zone designations. If we are ever designated as an orange or red zone, schools are immediately closed and you are 100% remote for at least four calendar days after the zone designation is announced. This will provide you time to begin testing. You could reopen as early as the fifth day, provided that no one attends in-person on campus until a negative COVID test result is provided. And that's for both students and staff. So if you think about it, those first four days, not only are you going 100% remote, but to come back on that fifth day, you really almost have to test everybody.
On the first day?
Well, within those first four calendar days because you do get the results fairly quickly. And so anybody that's negative can come back. So it's quite, quite the mountain to climb here. And then after that, you have to continue to test 25%, not 20%, 25% of the student and staff population each week.
And they've got to be lower than the 5.5 or 4.5?
You got to continue just to keep testing them.
They got to be negative.
Until the designation goes down. And again, I'm talking about the orange and the red zones, the real, the real bad designations.
So the testing doesn't go away until it goes back to yellow?
Correct.
But what percentage can you have in there? Does it have to be all negative results?
No, because if you have positive results, now you're, now you're quarantining. Now you're doing this. So the negative results come in those first four days that the people are back on campus.
But if we're back on, if we do get back on campus and you're still testing, you get a negative result, does that throw everything?
If, no, then that's fine. It's when you get.
What percentage are you allowed within that?
You just have to test 25% of, of the people that are on campus with you and any positives that are gone and you just keep every week testing 25%. Yes.
But there is no threshold at which point somebody can show that's positive?
No. No. As long as you can keep on with the testing.
Test like 10% positive or something. It's not like you got to show that.
No. And you have to wait until they designate your area a yellow zone or they get rid of the, you know.
So 50% of the people can test positive, as long as it's kept going about?
Pretty much. So the 25% tested each week must be comprised of unique individuals that were not tested before. So during the fifth week of testing, if you're still in this orange and red zone, the participants who were tested during the first week will be tested again because you've tested everybody. So when we go back to the yellow designation, when you're testing 20% and you're doing that for two weeks, I'm banking on that I do firmly believe that is what that's, what's occurring in our district. We are at a much lower positivity rate than what's going on out there in the Finger Lakes reason and in Genesee County. So when I talk about if we have to test 200 people the first week and another 200 people the second week, I'm banking on the fact that I do believe that we don't have to test anymore. And I do believe out of those 400 people and a lot of those being employees and I'll be the first one to, to jump on there and be tested first and Mr. Montroy said he'd be on there, that we could very easily probably get 400 people to consent. Therefore, the people that say, I'm not doing this, I won't, will be pushed off to the side. I don't ever want to have to go out to the community and say, look, I got to test another 200 or another 400 and I really need your consent because if that is the case and we can't abide by the testing requirements, we will have to go fully remote. But I, but I do believe, you know, just from the numbers that we're seeing and some of the districts that are actually going through this in Monroe County, that a lot of the spread of this coronavirus is not, is not in schools. It's, it's not the kids showing it. So you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Just to clarify, the orange-red zone has to be unique individuals, but in the yellow zone, it's just 20% randomly volunteering or chosen?
There's a little bit of a numbers game that you could play because after you've tested the first 400 people, two weeks, two weeks has gone by. So can you retest them? Those are questions that we're waiting answers for. And what you do with the, with the parents that won't consent for those kids, one of the questions was, well, if you now need them to, do they have to go fully remote? If I have an employee that says, there's no way you're testing them, what do we do then? So this is the guidance as of really this morning. So there's lots, still a lot of questions out there of.
Well, that's what I noticed. This says orange and red, so I'm going to assume it doesn't apply to the yellow.
To yellow. Because you have to continue testing until that zone designation is lifted. Even if we're lower and we don't have any positives, we can't say, oh, we're out of the orange or red zone. That would be up to, up to the state. So as far as the testing goes, I consult with the superintendents once a week. Obviously, I have a, you know, a Zoom call with Paul Pettit, our local director of health each week. We're talking about what does it look like? Do we test at the end of the day to protect student and employee privacy in case of a positive result? So we're trying to think what is the best way to test kids because obviously, we get those results in 15 minutes. If we start testing people at eight o'clock and we're grabbing kids and employees and throwing them out the door, that doesn't look good. So you know, that is something that we'll mull over and, and work on a schedule. Parents, guardians have the option to have a test administered by their own family physician and submit those results to the school. So they don't need to be tested here. The tests are free here. We'll have trained staff to do it. But if the parents, guardians feel, you know, more comfortable having their own physician do the testing, unfortunately, those tests need to be done after we get designated. If you were tested now and said, hey, you know, my son or daughter was, you know, was negative a week ago, those don't count. But certainly, they have that right. Now Matt, you had asked me about parents being comfortable with their kids being tested if they were here. There's some concerns with that because number one, you're bringing people in from the outside that, you know, we're trying to be very strict on, on visitors. And I don't know if we need to get to that point. Because right now, we're going to test the people that just outwardly give us their consent to be tested. And I'm hopeful that at least 40% of our community will allow us to do that. If it comes down to that, then we'll have to discuss how that, how that would, how that would look. I did receive a call this morning and a parent had asked, hey, if I drop my kid off in the morning, can I just pop on in and watch the test being done? We actually haven't gotten there that far. You know, so I'm hoping none of this comes into play, but you know, we'll answer those questions if and when we get there.
John, who pays for the test?
We are given the test through the State Department of Health.
So once they designate us a yellow zone, then they would also.
And I'll get to there in a second. Yep. And again, if we cannot fulfill the required number of tests to be administered, we will need to transition to a fully remote learning environment. But there's certain, certain things that we can do before we ever get there. Our goal obviously is to stay 100% open. So here's additional information. Lauren, this is exactly what you were just asking. We have applied for an LSL. There was an application that I submitted earlier last week that gives us a limited service laboratory certification to conduct these tests on-site. So I'm hopeful that we get approval this week. We also needed approval from our medical director, Work Fit, Dr. J. Ellie, which we already have. So by applying for this limited service laboratory, the New York State Department of Health will provide these test kits to us at no cost if and when it is necessary to do so. Currently, right now, I believe all of their tests are being shipped to Monroe County. I can see a lot of tests being shipped to Erie County and we just kind of happen to be in the middle. So if we ever get designated as a, a yellow zone, we will be putting in, in orders for these tests. I want the community and parents and the board to understand that these testing results must be reported and enter into ECLRS, which is an electronical clinical laboratory reporting system. And it also needs to be reported on the school survey to the COVID-19 report card. This does include some general student and staff information that's mandated for reporting. So your date of birth, you know, positive test, negative test, you know, all of those sorts of things that are required.
Are they reported by name?
Yes. It's not the testing that's the issue here. Because again, testing somebody and getting results back in 15 minutes is not the issue. It's the hours and hours of the paperwork that takes to upload into the system. There's training for this ECLRS system that if we ever get designated, that I'll have to sit down with, you know, a handful of staff members to figure out who's going to input all of this information. It's mandated for, for the reporting. So I do want to reiterate that we are currently not in any sort of designated COVID testing zone. If indicated in a yellow colored zone, the district will initiate its testing protocols to remain fully open for 100% in-person teaching and learning. Again, if orange or red, we are forced to close and go 100% remote learning for four days, but we will do all in our power to initiate our testing protocols so we can get back to in-person teaching and learning. I just do want to, you know, advise families that we need to plan for all three designations. Certainly, I think if we're ever indicating. Certainly, I think if we're ever indicated that yellow will come first. But again, we'll provide any information to the community as we receive the updates. Again, we are not identified, but I do want to kind of go over some of these percentages just to give you a flavor of where we are at. So this is the percentage positive result by region. So if you come down here and take a look at the seven-day average, we are considered the Finger Lakes region. So it talks about the number of persons tested, the total tested positive, positive yesterday, and really what our seven-day average is. If you actually, I wanna scroll down and you can go here, results by county. If you wanna scroll down. So we're under the Finger Lakes region, obviously Genesee County. You can see that our percent positive is at a 4.9% over a seven-day average. So you may, yeah, you may ask, "Well, how come we haven't been designated as a yellow?" It's because the new tested positives aren't at that 15 threshold yet. And that was an "and" as part of his metrics. So this is updated daily and the numbers are creeping up.
So you've gotta be that then also for 10 days in a row, right? So is there any way for us to know we're 4.9% for seven days, six days, five days? Right, isn't that another one of the thresholds that we have to meet is greater than 3.5 for 10 days?
Yes, seven-day rolling average for 10 days. We're there right now and that's why we're getting our ducks in a row. It's my understanding that if we're gonna get designated a yellow zone, that we have a week to begin our testing and then we have to start testing for those two weeks. So there's a lot of schools in Erie County right now that were alerted that they need to begin testing next week. You will see that some schools are going to immediately close because they don't have the capacity or the staff or the money to test. What they're gonna do is go fully remote until that designation is lifted. So really, it just depends on the school district and what their plans are and challenges that they face.
And it would be the county. So you're saying like 14125 isn't too bad, but they're gonna put the whole county to yellow?
And I don't know. The concern that we have is that we thought they were drilling it down by zip code. But to see what he just did with Erie County, he really blanketed the whole place. He has the right to do it by zip code. If he does it here in Genesee County and we're just underneath that blanket, I really do have the confidence that if we did test for those two weeks, that we would be under the threshold out there. I do believe this area is much lower than the statistics here and that we could stop testing and not have it interrupt, you know, our 100% in-person learning here.
But we run a risk of going orange at that number, which.
Possibly.
I understand we ask you these questions. Sometimes the next day, the governor issues new mandates and then all changes, so if they're moving targets, these questions that we do.
Yeah, absolutely. But at least I wanted to provide the board and the community that's watching this, just, you know, again, what we're up against and just, you know, to be prepared. But I want to thank the board for your support and know that the district is being very proactive in trying to limit the disruption to our environment. And we just want to maintain that 100% in-person learning. So we'll do all that we can in our power to stay open and we'll go from there.
John, just one last, just for me. It's gotta be above the 3.5 and then you said "and 15 positive cases."
Per day.
Per day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we're just at, we're at the 4.9, but we're not at the 15 positive cases?
Correct. Now, again, that's for Genesee County.
Right.
That's not actually for our zip code.
Right, right.
So.
The 4.9 might not necessarily be 10 days in a row greater than 3.5, right? We don't know that.
Correct. It's on a rolling average and every day, whether it goes up or down, that's where it tries to smooth it out to make it more of a clear-cut statistical data number for you.
I have another question. Is there a possibility that anyone who's conducting a test like yourself, before, any kind of liability? What if, I don't know, you train JC or Josh or Jeff Schleggenoff, AD, or anybody else that you tested or trained for testing? Is our school's insurance gonna cover any liability you might incur? And that's for sure, because those people aren't gonna be left hanging out there should you trip and swab up some ass notes.
I will tell you, I will tell you right now that our two nurses will be trained. And currently, right now, JC, probably Connie and myself.
God bless you all.
Yes. We are covered under any sort of liability. Part of having that LSL and the limited laboratories, we've got our i's dotted and our t's crossed.
Because I would hate for you all to be dwelling your Q-tips.
We even talked about the liability that you have these false positives or false negatives and what do you do? And you made my kid quarantine for 14 days because they had a false positive, but it was wrong. So I will also tell you that the accuracy of these tests, I was told, was about 95% to 96%, which was reassuring, because I initially was told that it was about a 75%. And that if someone was tested positive, that the first thing you should do is recommend that they go see their primary care physician to take a confirming test to make sure that they are positive. Well, why don't we use those tests to begin with? Why are we, you know, so?
Because they take too long. Well, see, that was my question, that what test do we have that's 90% reliable? Because that's not what we're hearing in the media about these quick result tests.
Correct.
So you're just going on what you've been reassured by?
We're going by the Department of Health of New York State and their guidance to stay open.
Okay.
So a risk would be that we're declared yellow and they don't have the test kits on hand to send to us quickly enough. So we have two weeks from that point to complete this 20%. And what's the likelihood, is it greater than 50% or less than 50%, that the health department's gonna have these tests and be able to get them to us within the two weeks?
They assure us that if we're in a zone that needs testing, that they would provide them to us.
Currently, but if it gets worse within the country, then that probability of getting those tests here could.
So understand, this is also in conjunction with our local health department. You know, obviously, we talked to Paul Pettit. You know, we have a Zoom meeting with him tomorrow. It's every Wednesday at 10 o'clock that the superintendents here in Genesee County meet with him. So, you know, we talked to him about, you know, who orders the tests? Is it the school district? Is it the region? So, you know, as we're moving forward right now, this week is the first set of schools out of Monroe County that are testing. So we're kind of watching to see how that's all working. And I'm sure, you know, you had mentioned before that they're getting a lot of negative results back in the schools, which is promising. But, you know, this is all new. So I can't imagine them shutting us down because we don't have the test, but we're abiding by everything that they're saying. So, you know, we're hopeful that, you know, it doesn't come down to that, but if it does, then we'll have the test and we'll be ready to go.
Is the sports trainer that we hired through that company, is that somebody we could use to help with this?
We thought about that. He would still need to be trained. Like I said, there's a three-hour course right now. He's not. I also reached out to Workfit Medical, who is our, you know, our medical director. They do have nurses on staff that they can provide assistance at a fee. I would like to say to the board and the district that the cost for us to do this is zero. But if it gets to be very overwhelming and maybe it just is taking us longer, there is the option that we could have clinical nurses that will come in that are already trained to help us with the testing or the paperwork. But we're gonna try to do this within-house before looking at any monetary expenses. Yes, Dan?
John, I wanted to learn this question on you and others doing the training. You'll be trained by certified staff to, you know, as far as the confidence of the community members and others is conducting those tests, that will be all right then?
Well, I would like to, I would like to say to the community that our nurses are the ones that are administering the tests. Like I said, I think, I was told by Workfit Medical that one person can conduct 20 tests in an hour. So I do think that's doable for our nurses to conduct that. I think the community would rather hear that, you know, Mrs. Starkweather or, you know, Mrs. Jared is doing it rather than Mr. Fiscus. But again, we want to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row. You know, not being through this, we don't know if that's a reasonable expectation for our nurses. I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow afternoon to see their thoughts and their comfort levels in all of this and try to be transparent with them. But I do think we can have this within-house. And again, I don't think it's the test that's the major issue. It's just all the paperwork and everything else involved in scheduling kids and setting up times and, you know, reading the results and figuring the rest of that stuff out. But I would like to talk to the nurses tomorrow and be able to kind of reassure our community that it's our registered nurses that are administering the tests.
So if you have to do roughly 20 people in each building per day, you could have the nurses do all the children and some of the rest of you, if you had to do the staff, that may be more acceptable?
Correct. And we haven't gotten to, you know, what the schedule of that looks like. Does that mean you're testing 10 kids and 10 employees? You know, all of that, we haven't gotten there yet. So this is all, this is all new. Absolutely.
Okay. So if the governor for the state, not necessarily, does only put the zones by the county and not by the zip code, and we go through our two weeks of testing and we can get ourselves off because we are lower, but the county is still in yellow, do we stop testing until the yellow changes to like an orange and then because the county went to orange, even though we were testing, well, because we stopped testing, we don't know. So then we, so as long as we've done our two weeks of due diligence, doesn't matter how long, the county, the county could be in yellow for three months?
That's my understanding, that after two weeks, there's enough sufficient data per the guidance, that we can stop testing within the schools. Yep. Now, could that change? Absolutely. But from what the guidance says is that after two weeks, if we are below what's happening in our region, we don't have to test anymore. And that's my hope. Okay?
Any other questions? Thanks, thanks for your commitment to keep us open, John. We get a lot of compliments throughout the community about keeping these kids in class. So like you say, the staff is doing a great job.
Yeah, you are doing a good job.
But we appreciate your commitment to keep us open.
Okay.
Okay. On the new business consent agenda, be resolved items 92 through 95, be approved via consent agenda. Give a motion. Any discussion?
I just want to say how grateful I am to Rose Mead and her death to have made that generous donation to our school. That's very sweet of her and she never lost her loyalty or support of our district.
She's a tiny woman with a big chart, man. I love that, that she was always here and the vastest support. It's not a surprise to me that she and her family donated this money.
That was wonderful of Rose Mead to do that.
Yeah, great person.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passed? Communications, we got a thank you card from Pat Burke and the Bright Oak Solar Tax Agreement Notice. I think we've got that electronically and I've got a paper copy here if anybody wants that. Discussion roundtable. Anything there from anybody? Subcommittee reports. I don't believe we've had any meetings. On the personnel, be resolved that personnel items 12-2 through 12-6 be approved via consent agenda. Give a motion. Motion. And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Executive session be resolved at the Board of Education and our executive session at 7:26 for the purpose of discussing the employment of a particular person. Give a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passed.